Can get away with it being halfway up, if he doesn't use it up and down a lot, parks can get away with that. Streets did not use that. They need to be able to do that. The hydraulics is now important to the parks.
Eli, does all the, the work on the hydraulics in-house, or does it get sent out for them to?
No, they especially, it is outsourced, and they actually come on site to make those repairs.
They come site, they come site?
They come on site to make the repairs, yes. As I say, this is a very large piece of equipment. They're very small, so you couldn't actually take it to them, you have to actually transport it, because it could not go in the streets. Any other questions? As reference to personnel policies and personnel hires, I sent an email out, and I decided, it's hard to even hit the email, but I had to test it out. I sent the email out in reference to our current vacancies. Ms. Connie Moreno is your official comptroller. We did work label, and I did stay within a budget, I believe that the last meeting that we had talking about these positions, you were allowed to have an agency not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars in reference to do that. We stayed within that fee in reference to what it cost to do that. You do understand that what happened with her billing is that I did not pay, we did not pay her directly, we paid her through the agency, and then when we actually decided to hire her, we had to pay them like a fine with fee. If that did not exceed the twenty-five thousand dollars that you were allowed to do, her salary is actually sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is about two thousand five hundred dollars higher than what our former predecessor was. In reference to our city secretary, Ms. Moreno is officially your city secretary, however, I did not pay her with her previous secretary name. Ms. Moreno is making eighteen dollars an hour, and your previous city secretary made twenty-two thousand, I mean made twenty-two thou- twenty-two thousand fifty cents an hour. That's a difference of about five thousand dollars each of the seven. But there's also a statement we received because Ms. Moreno held a previous position, and that position has been vacant during this time. Your interim position is as well today, it is still vacant. There is Ms. Connie that I've hired for code enforcement. She was supposed to start Monday, however, she had a death in the family, and she'll be starting after the holiday.
I'm sorry, what was she hired for?
Code enforcement.
Oh, code enforcement.
Yes. She is a resident of La Meria, she currently works at Smeed's, so she will be starting on Tuesday after the holiday. She will be located in the office with Smeed, and her main goal is, we get to, first you have to give her an opportunity to learn the ten basic things that I want her to do, or ten basic codes. In reference to vehicles, one, high and tall grass is another. And you can imagine that there are a lot of games and code enforcement that we have. He's not busy, the city judge in reference to coming up with a plan, there's going to be monthly meetings in reference to that, monthly court, actually in reference to that, because you're going to be able to do that. But the first thing we want to do is let people know it's coming and notify people. And I think what I think from Texas, we had, previously when I started, was actually the follow-up. So this will be her full-time job, and all she's going to do is to notify people, deal with their notices, and follow up. They can address the vacant lots, branches on the street, in reference to vehicles, and dealing complaints. The one reason why I selected her, she also has experience with animal control. And you can imagine, right now, we are using Nero, who is in our water department, also slash animal control. I inherited that system, I don't understand it. However, we're going to work with code enforcement to do more of the animal control, and also with the office. Please, what is the office's name?
Jessica Terris.
Jessica Terris, so we certify the animal control. One of the things we're going to have to do right off is TC, if you mentioned that you have your dog, the animal control system, located at the sewer point, that is in violation. So she's going to be charged with leaving a new animal control location, she's going to be keeping those dogs, and we have to catch them. But in your state environment rather than at the sewer point. That's going to be one of her responsibilities.
How much, how much is the break on that job?
That job pays fourteen thousand dollars. The range, in this case, will be between twelve and fifteen, and based on her experience, we'd average her in fourteen thousand dollars.
Is that a new position, so we have that open?
Actually, it's, actually, it was titled Assistant Secretary, I've lived with Monica before, but it actually should be code enforcement.
Who will she report to?
Right now, she'll be reporting to myself and working with some vehicles until we're able to locate and hire a community development director, then that will be her direct supervisor.
Will she have other people under her?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, she has the capability of enforcing all of the ordinances, like, writing citations and so forth.
She'll be doing write citations in reference to mostly building and local orders that have to do with code enforcement. Branches trees, she won't be doing per people, so there's anything in reference to that. I've met with action detective, our team, as well as the chief of police, in reference to what the duty and responsibilities will be. There's mostly building, code enforcement type of things in reference to appearance, those kind of codes, abandoned vehicles, and control. But things such as, it took me following along for us, but she will not be writing citations for it.
How many more, are more employees needed for certain departments?
Well, you have some vacancies that we have, we have a vacancy and decided to simply, you know, leave a vacancy now in your sewer point, a worker. There's a vacancy there, the street supervisor has a vacancy, and I have that field, we can wait to develop a worker position. But we are preparing and working with the Texas Work Force, which is right here next to Chico Station, to have a job fair completely to do so. As we are sitting in the middle of the indoor core of Seattle, as you know, that is wonderful to have, that wonderful, kind of, they're still most of their CDL drivers, they're also taking care of a lot of new other workers are going, we can't repeat, their starting salary somewhere between twenty-seven and twenty-eight dollars an hour. So we have to be able to work locally and to be able to train people. One of the things in reference to training, we're going to be offering, instead of people getting CDLs, but we also are going to actually decide and promise they're going to, they have to stay employed with us for one year, or if not, they're going to keep up having to be retrained. It's the same thing that most people do, in reference to the best of them, they have to at least give back one year, or if they leave, on their own accord, they have to pay us back. If we terminate them, then of course, it's off the menu. Have any of the other employees from the other departments shown any interest in any of these positions? You know, they have, they are aware that they're open positions. Those positions will fall to immediately on the website, as well as in our front office on the local department, yes. Can you post it out to their offices, like at the sewer plant, or, please, post it outside? If the only one that applies is a part-time person applying for code enforcement, then our office is going to be able to put it on the end of the road that we have.
You said you're in the process of updating the policy book, how close are you to finishing the policy book?
Well, just like the charter, it's a very important policy, we just spent some time going through some of the issues that we have. It's outdated, it needs to be upgraded, so our HR person, Margaret, is working with that, in reference to that. This time of working something a little bit different, you have a team of components for that risk management, who is often, and have met with us twice, in reference to making recommendations, in reference to not only our personnel policy, but also our training, and actually even some law enforcement as well. Things that turn mostly to them, but not in our hand book, that we need to be able to, it'll be for the place only. And so we need to have those risk management things as part of the policy, but there's other things that happen. Device, cell phone devices, electronic devices, policies, we have, we don't have in place currently, that our hand book doesn't address. The next item, Ms. Moore, number one, the organizational chart review. In your budget, there's a organizational chart that is in, I've heard a discussion earlier tonight, it may not be the one that you want to prove, because that's the one that appears in the budget. I have not made any directional changes in my decision to the organizational chart. I'm trying to understand everybody's role, their duties, their job descriptions, and how it flows. So I will be making a recommendation, per my contract, as a requirement, organizational chart, we start the budgeting process. I will say that some of the flow in reference to that, you need to be able to have your comptroller actually supervise your front desk, that's where most of your money comes in, and so I'm going to make you that option, that the comptroller should actually supervise that department. Also, all of that, comptroller, HR, works together, so those components will be working together. That will probably display in the recommendation that I have coming forward. Public Works Director is good and important, but we don't have enough to have a public works director, as well as a community development director. Currently, you have Cindy Nichols as the only person in the building department. She is the only person who processes permits, she's the only person who receives applications for vans, planes, only two of them, only a permit show. That cannot happen. That's too much responsibility for one person, there's too many applications and things, and it lost me. And not if we're to talk about the quality of the straight place. And so what I'm anticipating is that the community development director actually will supervise her, as well as the code enforcement director. But I don't want to get ahead of myself, I'll present at the appropriate time.
So you're saying community development director versus the public works?
I wish I could have both, I'm going to ask for it in the budget, but right now, I don't have enough money to do both for this.
Ms. Turner, on the organizational chart, is it possible to have a quarter week review of state if we bring that?
The quarter week, I have a question to do, yes. And, but I don't have a recommendation for you at this time.
It's been a while, I mean, since, even since the, your review was done, which was done in January, so, according to the agreement, it should be done four weeks, so, probably by the end of this review, we'll establish the next time.
I'd probably give you my first draft in reference to that, my budget is good, if you do that. Ms. Moore, can I move to the next item? In reference to streets, as I mentioned earlier, we should be able to start the street program over the next three weeks, and hopefully we should get them to land in the, of ten streets within a nine-month period of time. The properties, the guys are excited about training, we sent some people for training earlier this year. Just to let you know, that the water department has to be trained. It is time for the city of Corazville to renew their water license, as well as their sewer license, regardless of whether it's licensed or not. Andrew actually just finished his training, and he's going to get back his water license. I'm going to send some new staff in reference to get their water certification, so hopefully there will be more people certified. Please keep in mind, as we're anticipating extending our water sewer plant to upgrade it to a larger plant, which we, that I projected, I agree, that the, the MNS that you studied, that it will have to be a plant that's operated twenty-four hours a day, rather than right now, because seventy-four, seventy-four, and on the weekends, it just takes deep levels. So as we do that, I anticipate, that's your question for the organizational chart, to combine the water sewer together, so that we have more staff, cross-train them, to allow us to operate this plant twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Once they get this trained, the, once all these equipment on the streets, would, would there be a raise for that?
Would it be a raise for it?
Yes.
Not in this one year. If there's a CDL license to do it, it has been historically done for a one-year, a one-hour raise, it would be a CDL. They have a policy in our practice. In reference to the evaluation, I have a recommendation, any raise that I'm going to be giving in reference to that, will definitely be brought to you during the budgetary process.
So there is no money in that budget? Let me see, this is, this is where I come from, about doing other things that, that didn't need to be done, but at the same time, these workers that are out there, on the go, out there, training and doing stuff, I, I believe they, they deserve some kind of rate. Now, we shift money to be able to buy a door back here, I think we should be able to give a quarter or a little to the employer.
Well, I agree, anything, they received a one percent raise, a two percent increase, that was based, I did not set up a lease on a door raises, that I left it to you. But in reference to the parking lot, it was from the maintenance, that was there, I didn't have to bring money or take money from anyone, in reference to doing the door. There's two thousand dollars for maintenance, which isn't enough to maintain the building, but we did use that line item. We did not take from a seller line item to provide that.
No, I understand all that, but there, there's got to be a little leftover money to be able to do things, and, and when some of these employees are getting these big machinery, they're taking on a big responsibility on their jobs, and I, I believe that, you know, they deserve some kind of compensation. But I mean, we'll wait on the, on the next quarter or whatever.
I will, I will.
I would like for you to think though.
I will remind you, council, that you have a bargaining agreement in place, that if you give across-the-board raises, we give it across-the-board, that would include your bargaining rule as well. So if you give a two percent raise across-the-board to all of your employees, and it's not job decision or performance-based, you have to give a fiscal department a raise as well. I believe, from my memory, I think some people got somewhere between one to three percent, and the fiscal department receives somewhere between five to six percent.
But I think there's another word that they use, that you can use, is a, a, a.
A mere job performance raise, yes.
And that we don't have to use.
Based on evaluation, and it's totally been done so, we give it a fiscal review. And those are going to be starting in June.
What we started in June?
Evaluations.
Across the board for everyone?
Yes, so just like, they took the way the chief judges on, I'm historically, and the city manager, and the department head worked together to do all their priorities.
But based on evaluation, you said?
Based on evaluation, they made a recommendation, they was implementing it in the new budget.
According to, and, and the department heads will be doing the evaluations?
The department head and supervisors, and we're going to do a self-evaluation. The evaluation tool is for people to look at themselves, how I see myself, and then we need to have supervisors evaluate them as well. And they sit to talk, and then they come back to the city manager and say, they did this, they did that, and learning and training is very important. But that piece of equipment, if it's going to be trained on, the things already have, it's approved sometime. We just replace it, it's a newer model from twenty years ago to the one that we have now. But that piece of equipment is part of their daily operation, as we say, it wasn't.
And I'm sorry to, to bring that up, I mean, not sorry, because I, I do go out there for employees, but, you know, I get tired of, and, and, here at, in the office, there's people that give five-dollar raise, four-dollar raise, and stuff like that, and, and, and to me, I believe that they're out there working harder, not that they don't deserve the money here, but there should be, you know, the people that are out there making, I don't know, twelve dollars, eleven dollars, I think that would be.
Twelve, that letter becomes a supervisor, they can get supervisor head. So, for example, I could just monitor, if she, she was going to be assistant secretary, she received assistant secretary head. When she became city secretary, she received city secretary.
And I guess that's what the mayor kind of was concerned about, and that's a good question that the mayor asked about, you know, if we both need jobs, because there's, there's people out there that I've heard say, well, I wanted that job, but they didn't offer it for me. So are we looking at if employees are able to move up on their, on their job titles, if they can? And I don't know that, that there hasn't been one in the last two years.
It is posted, it was posted internally.
I understand, you told us, you told us that nobody applied, so I'm fine with that. Thank you, that's, that's it.
Okay. Processing the branch pickup, and cleanup, we clean up and responses that. Now, I haven't changed any policies in reference to branch pickup at all, but according to what my staff told me, that approximately two years ago, they issued a rules and regulations in reference to how it happens, and there's an application fee. But just so that I can remind you, that there's a base fee of thirty-five dollars, assessed to the water account for any branch pickup by the city of Corazville. Should the power be largely off the city crew to take longer than one hour, additional seventeen fifty will charge front half hour for the community's allocation. There is a senior citizen discount, so that basically is fifteen dollars assessed to the water room, and a seven thousand fifty cent per extra hour. Typically, people will call, say my bank is out, do a work order, staff will go by and verify it, and then we use a schedule to pick up, they're going to pick up. I know on First Street, is that person?
Please, can I have a look in the first?
On First Street, there's a large pile there, that came there, that was there before Easter holiday, we probably did it longer, but they had it cut it up smaller. Now, we could have picked it up, and we spent all that time, but we could have charged it seventeen fifty an hour, or a half hour, but long as that pool is there. And then, of course, our front row, it was going to be burnt up, it was a mallet up and down. And so what we decided to do, the concept of several times, even when we contracted, that did the work, we have told them on several mitigations, we need to go back, cut it up smaller, so that we can actually use that branch. But that is the policy that's going to be placed, before I have to change it, we can work to repeat, and they get the sets and they want to do it.
Who was contacted at that address? Who was contacted at that address?
Nancy Avina, she lives in the trailer, right there on Route One of First, I believe, the work order.
She called to be put on the brush pickup list, to pick up the brush, and she was called, and, and, and told, they told her we couldn't pick it up, and, and, because Alex came to me, Savanka, they just knocked down the trees, they didn't cut them, they just knocked down the trees. And I said, well, have them call her, and ask her to have them cut it up a little bit smaller, for us to be able to pick it up easier. And from what I understood, the girls called her, there's a phone number that's required on the application, and she was called, and she, and, and, and to, to ask her, she would please cut it up before we picked it up, and she was supposed to call back when that was done. And to date, it's not, she does not call back.
I mean, the project, we used to call to the team, I spoke to him, right around the nineteenth, April, as well as his brother, who I think they partner worked together, it's a friend of the team, I spoke to him yesterday, and he said he was lying when they need to cut it smaller, so they say he can come back and get it up. But we can figure out that they would be in additional charge of seventeen dollars a half hour.
She said she would be willing to pay. I'm not sure how much she's willing to pay, but she, she needs help. Well, it's done the second week, brush pickup is normally done the second week of every month, of, of every month, so, you know, and they'll call back and wants it, but the problem is, is that this is too hard. Our guys are going to have to cut it and, and, and pick it up, because the loader can't pick up the trees that big and put it in, in the dump truck. They're, they're too big to fit in the dump trucks, the loader can't pick it up, because what they did was, the trees were dead, they just pushed them over. So you have roots in this whole big tree.
And it'll be fine, it'll be fine, the truck is willing to do that, and it's a charge of seventeen fifty an hour. So she shouldn't have her contractor come back, cut it smaller, we can say that, but the base fee is thirty-five, and an additional charge of seventeen fifty, and one base fee fifty one.
If it doesn't get cleaned up, is there a penalty?
Yes, if it doesn't get cleaned up, we'll pick it up and charge her, and it won't be the thirty-five base and seventeen fifty, it'll be what you cost us in terms of labor and time.
Any other, what is it, citywide, come out July?
It's in July, it's Saturday after the Fourth of July.
I believe it's the twelfth there.
We, we, we talked to, and I'm meeting with tomorrow with Vera, Vera from Republic, to talk about how they can help us as well. We met over there, some of the guys have some ideas that we can bring for pickup, for, for our first time, assuming I pick up with you, I probably can talk to them. I think the councilman, you mentioned that probably what you think of a basis to him, actually, his services at town. I think it's, it's going to be the one. In reference to the data, it's just for evaluation, you have to have views, and I'll just see what you set that up.
Second meeting in June?
The second meeting in June, I believe, is the twenty-second? The general, the twenty-second?
Hey, the second meeting?
I think this is, yes ma'am, I forget that you. Do you want to offer an open invitation, and if you have any questions or things in reference to that, we're going to have to, if you want to run, to answer your questions, but we will, for questions after the meeting, at the initial steps, we will go through the access questions as well. So, you know, we can set that up.
Can I go back and ask a question on that position, for the community development, or was it from?
Community development, yes ma'am.
What did that person?
The community development director, we have her with planning and zoning, and they were actually directing code enforcement as well. As you anticipate, we have a lot of projects coming forward in reference to development, housing, and promotion, so we're going to be working with that. It's, it's a lot for someone to be able to do for one person.
What is Andrew doing, what, what's his?
Andrew's role, Andrew's role has been special projects, the special project coordinator, so he's been working diligently with special projects at United ABC. He's also working with the sewer plant, you know, he does hold that license, and actually the city are being to operate the plant, operate his license. He was very instrumental in helping me, assisting me in actually making repairs that happened to the disentrapment. He's working on special projects such as the sewer mapping, we need to get ready to do water mapping, as well as the wells, we're working with that. He's really like a construction coordinator, we have city contacts.
So this person will have experience, we could send you the.
Yes, I'm working with someone with permitting experience, as well as zoning experience. I've been reviewing some of things, and I have some of the, that I need to be able to remove, some locally, and some out of state, and tell me that in other parts of Texas.
And do we need somebody to be overseeing all the departments out in the streets?
It would be convenient if I can do both. As I anticipated, as we met at the event, we probably have twelve permits this year in housing, as well as the course of development, such as the gas station, HDB, I need someone in that capacity. If I can find one to do both, I'd love to have both.
So who supervises them now?
Every, every once in a while, they'll do that, they all report to me, they meet on Tuesday afternoon at one o'clock. They're free this morning, and maybe seven o'clock this morning, and I brought them breakfast. Montez, Montez?
Yes, can we throw that one, may I ask a couple of questions on a couple of properties, I have a few. With the owners, the line of Third Street is right in front of the Baptist Vol. Court. That is held by the, by the Wilson County trustee, and the lady has been complaining for several months. As a matter of fact, I think she even put in a request for the city to clean it up. And when I spoke to you, you suggested that I would go talk to the commissioner for cleanup, do you recall that?
Yes ma'am, yeah.
You know that the commissioner's not going to go through that.
So actually, I spoke to the commissioner myself, Mr. Farah, in reference to that property, and other vacant properties. And I believe what I told you was that at the time, what is happening with vacant properties such as that, that if the city cuts them, we have the right to leave because it is a nuisance, but if it's going to go back for taxes, we'll have to get them on, and you will not recoup that money. So I talked with Mr. Farah, he said that he's going to bring it before the court, to say that they improved the program, and I left them the addresses, and I gave them those addresses, that the vacant parts will adjust to their group residency, because that is, it's gone back to town because of the legal taxes. But I'm having enough to do to cut the four acres, our property, as well as sometime historically, the council elected to maintain the text about motorways, and so that takes up a lot of our school's time and equipment.
There was another request from Mrs. Arlosca at nine twenty-two third, she's right in front of the Catholic church. She had asked for stripes to designate no parking. She's handicapped, she's got a problem with the SEMA, and she has a no parking sign, but it's not, it's, 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 it's not large enough to be seen, and so she asked if the city could put some stripes in front of her walkway, because she had an emergency one day, and the ambulance couldn't back up to her house.
Does, does the city do that, that's my question. It is a city street, we will strike it, in reference to the need, I have not received that complaint in the.
I think I had, I think I had spoken to about it a while back, but we're going to look at it later on, but, her, her concern is, is they block her in, and the ambulance keep coming there. So then they block her little, little sidewalk, and they said they, they had to carry, carry her out.
I was like, who's there, though? I don't know who's there.
Yeah.
No, who's blocking?
The church, the church on Sunday morning.
Oh, so the church has had.
So, so, so what I, I think I had asked you, but I was going to get back to you, and I didn't get back to you, so I told myself that I always gets you, but, the, the, the thing was, right on the sidewalk, like, if we can paint the lines that are yellow, where art won't part, that way if the ambulance gets there, while it's Sunday morning, they're, they're in church, they're blocking her in, and all she wants is a stripe. Down the sidewalk, when the ambulance gets there, they can just put the ambulance, they even block the driveway. She says sometimes they can't even get out, she can't get out of there until the church is open, so.
Well, if you can give me the address, and the streets, we can give the address to Andrew, and he is brought forward, so we have to, Mr. Rose, as well, in reference to his people, and I will see the requests, and so we'll be able to do that.
The address is nine twenty-two third.
With all due respect, I've, I've seen that location, I was just going to ask you, Mr. Modals, about that driveway, because I've never seen it blocked. The driveways are always up.
It's blocked, she's got a report, but she. It's blocked, she's got a report, but she hit a car, and, and she called the police, she said, don't worry about it, they won't do nothing because they were, they were legally parked there, they ain't going to do no complaint. She's hit a car, she's had it already, or she's hit a car on her driveway.
Ms. Flores, just in some defense, because I used to live in the house next door, it's, what it is, is that the cars, they don't totally block the whole driveway, but they do, um, park kind of close, so when you back out, you can clip them, she'll, you, she could, you know, it, I can see where it'd be really easy to hit them, because I know they used to park in between the two driveways, in that little piece of concrete, a car would park right there.
So there's signs, I have a one standing for you, the signs of the same, the signs of the same.
She put her own sign, and she carries a horse, you know those horses that they put, like wood, I mean, she carries it, and she's about eighty something years.
If she has her own sign, then the police would have a hard time enforcing that.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, see what can you.
We can look at doing, uh, front for a no parking sign, uh, so that we can do that so that the police can actually enforce that sign, there's some private, no parking sign, the police have no authority to.
This side, nobody's.
Then it's, then it's a private, not a city sign.
No, not here, it's a little private.
So then we need to be able to look at that, and ask the police department to take a, you know, you can say, no parking on this side of the street, but it has to be a city sign, and, and, and associated with that, so that the law enforcement can enforce it. But if it's our own private, no parking sign, the police have to.
The eighties are about, in the eighties or something, she, she's got to put that horse every morning, Sunday morning.
Um, I have nine twenty-two.
Mario, why don't, why don't you, um, talk to Father Frank about that? Maybe he can do something. Uh, Father Frank.
He should make an announcement.
That he might be able to do more than.
Yeah, because I know, I know that they, when they, when they put the lights up, and they painted the stripe, they painted their side, because at the scene, and I guess they might not have permission, but maybe with this, with Father Frank, and seeing it better, then he can talk about it.
Right, right, because I know, I know exactly what, what we're talking about.
And, and, and the process you've been telling me for about?
Two years.
A year?
Yeah. Like getting, getting parishioners not to park there?
God bless you, because they don't have a lot of place to park.
Because there are always many vague today.
We need a real sign, God, a couple of, because they have their expectations, because they still peace, I wish it would happen.
And every time she sees the, thank you for that sign, it was beautiful, you put it up there, and she just, and that, that.
She's going to thank you now, maybe she can add it to her.
I just, I just have a question, because, because it appears that two of you on city council are very well aware of her concern, um, but Henrietta, not as much, it was mentioned, is there a certain procedure that the citizen needs something done, they need to go through the off, uh, to the office manager, to the city manager?
I think she's called.
Or do they go through city council?
Well, I'm, I'm, I want to leave it up for the, for the next meeting, but, uh, yeah, I mean, she, she's called before.
Okay, but has she, she's contacted the city manager before?
I contacted the city manager, but we didn't, I didn't follow all the way through because I never come back, and, and that's my fault. But at the same time, it was brought up this year, and I think it was brought up to Mrs. Castillo, so.
It just seems.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm part of her party.
It just seems there needs to be some.
Just, and I want to, that, uh, what is, what is, is we can get a, a technical or a test to use, as well as a chance to use, about other stuff that they lack and have. So we can get a, create a, 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 a,[1694.11]